Okay, call to order of the March 28th Council meeting, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Corkel, here.
Turnigan.
Here.
Poe.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longbreak.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay recess the city council meeting convene a joint council and PUA meeting. Recess to executive session.
Can you hear John?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. So the first item the council will be meeting.
We gotta turn it up on our end.
You're on mute?
So.
How about now? How about now? Can you hear me?
No.
How about now?
No.
Barely. Like almost not.
My uh.
You have to get a megaphone.
Uh, how about now?
No.
No better? No better?
Are you on mute?
No.
We can hear.
Not him.
Dale, do you want me just to read the rest? The agenda items.
John, do you want us to read the, the, the executive session items?
Yeah, um, well, actually they're on the agenda, they're listed and.
Executive session, NPUA Council Conference with Legal Counsel.
Wait, he's saying, right, John's saying something.
No, that's fine. What Rick's doing is fine.
We're good? Okay.
With legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code. Number five, four, nine, five, six, day point nine. Subsection D, subsection one, one case, Rio Buena Vista at all. Versus City of Needles, case number CIVSB. Two oh two, eight, four, three, nine. Item B is NPUA Council Conference, League Council regarding. Potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code. Five, four, nine, five, six, point nine, subsection D, subsection four, one potential case. Uh, C, conference with real estate negotiator pursuant to government code. Five, four, nine, five, six, twenty eight. Agency negotiator Rick Daniels or as designated. Negotiating parties are the City of Needles as a potential seller. And San Bernardino County as a potential buyer of a portion of a building. Located at one eleven Bailey Avenue, APN zero, one, eight, five, two, two, one, one, three, zero, 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 zero. Under negotiations or price and terms. D, public employee appointment pursuant to government code, section five, four, nine, five, seven, seven. Title, city manager. E, uh, public employee evaluation pursuant to government code. Number five, four, nine, five, seven, title, position, city clerk. And do any math.
No. Executive session, report by city attorney.
Yes, the council met in executive session. Item number A was NPUA Council Conference with Legal Counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code. Section five, four, nine, five, six, point nine, D one. And that involved one case, which was the Rio Buena Vista. Association at all versus City of Needles, case number CIVSB. Two, zero, two, eight, four, three, nine. And there was reportable action taken. There was a motion to approve a settlement agreement with. The plaintiff in that case, and that document is now a public record. And under the terms of that settlement, the city had prevailed at the trial court level in the case. The plaintiff appealed. The decision of the trial court and under the terms of the settlement, the ruling of the trial court will remain intact. And the, the vote, there was a first by Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Longbreak to approve the settlement. And the vote was as follows, Councilmember Merritt was in favor of approving the settlement. Councilmember Pogue was in favor. Councilmember McCorkle had recused herself from that item and did not participate in the closed session. And she recused herself due to the fact that she lives in close proximity to the Rio Buena Vista development. Uh, Councilmember Belt was in favor of the settlement, Councilmember Longbreak was in favor, and Councilmember Campbell was in favor. The second item was item B, NPUA Council Conference with Legal Counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code. Section five, four, nine, five, six, point nine, D four. One potential case, there was no reportable action taken in closed session. Item C, Conference with Real Property Negotiator pursuant to government code, section five, four, nine, five, six, point eight. The agency negotiator, city manager Rick Daniels or as designated negotiating parties. The City of Needles as potential seller and San Bernardino County as a potential buyer of a portion. Of the building located at one, 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 one Bailey Avenue and the APN numbers listed in the agenda. And there was no reportable action on that item. Item D, Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code, section five, four, nine, five, seven. Uh, title, city manager, there was no reportable action taken in closed session. Item E, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code, section five, four, nine, five, seven. Uh, title, a position, city clerk, no reportable, no reportable action on that item either. And that concludes the report out.
Thank you. Um, please stand for, um, the, the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of British States, one nation, under God.
God, I pray for your blessing, your strengthening and your protection, and yes, your wisdom on every member of this council. And I pray, God, that you would know. That you would continue to fill us with your spirit and guide us in our decisions and bless our community. Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
And the approval of the agenda?
I'm motioning that we approve.
I'll second it.
Do we have any conflict of interest tonight?
We had the two that were announced earlier.
Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, correspondence tonight?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, introductions, we have past council members, Tim Terrell, Sean Goodmanson. We have code enforcement Adrian Chavez. And we welcome the tribal members Colleen Garcia and Nora McDowell, thank you for coming. Um, okay. Um, as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Oh. Oh, I forgot, city attorney parliamentary procedures.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the, uh, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the council, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. The council has adopted a three minute time limit for public comment.
And Your Honor, we feel to take the roll call vote for the approval of agenda.
Okay.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkel.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pogue.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
Thank you.
As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode, thank you. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the city council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct timely meeting, a three minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code. Section two dash eighteen amendments to the California Government Code, section fifty. Five, four, nine, five, oh prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Judy.
I'm Judy Thornton, one eight, three, five, South Drive, Mojave Valley, and I'm with Needles Tourism. Uh, the museum, as I've said before, is running about a hundred visitors through there a week. And we are doing two, at least one, but sometimes two to three tours a week. So we have decided that this year with the museum, instead of closing the middle of June and opening again after Labor Day, we are going to keep the museum open this summer. Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays from nine to twelve. We have momentum going and we don't want to lose that by closing for two and a half months. We have more than enough volunteers who are willing to work. And so we have decided to try this and see how it works. We've never had the museum open in the summertime because we've never had the need. But we do feel now that we have the need, so we will have it open three days a week and hopefully we'll have visitors in. The boat people in the mornings if nothing else.
Okay.
Also, uh, I also want to invite all of you to the Needles Rodeo this Friday and Saturday. I look around here and see a lot of sponsors, a lot of people have been down to buy tickets, and I think we're going to be way, way, way crowded again this year like we were last year. And as you all know, Dr. Page is our grand marshal, and I understand he's thrilled to death about that, and I guess he is. We're thrilled to have him. And, um. Other than that, we hope to see you all this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
James.
Good evening. Pastor Jim Jones, one seventy Balboa Place, Needles. Uh, Madam Mayor and Council, nice to see you folks again, pleasure. With the recent, all the recent talk about the bathroom situation for the El Garza's and Santa Fe Park. I was sitting around doing things that I normally do and an idea came to mind. And that idea came to mind because I was doing some mental calculations about, we have bathrooms at our ball fields. We have bathrooms at, uh, Jack Smith's Park, we have bathrooms at, at public accommodation in most all of our public, uh, places, including First Beach. Well, why don't we build some bathrooms at Santa Fe Park for the courtesy and comfort of our tourism and, and what this nice lady just, uh. Announced to us about the increased tourism. Uh, wouldn't it be nice for somebody to get off the road and, and pull into Santa Fe Park and go, oh, look, there's a bathroom, I've been on the road three hours. I've been in that situation and it sure was a pleasure to me to find a town with that. So we have an excellent grant writer, I know there's funds out there in the public spectrum that are available. There's plenty of space at, uh, Santa Fe Park. I would, uh, ask you folks to consider this. Not only for the good of the, for our community, hi, Tundra. But for, for to increase and, uh, and to move forward our tourist industry. Because I know if I stopped in a park and there wasn't a bathroom, I don't think I'd ever stop at that park again. So God bless you, God keep you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Johnson, thirteen, twenty, Santa Fe Circle. If you guys haven't noticed, our off ramps are starting to take shape. Uh, they're starting to look really nice with the different colored rock. State Councilwoman Belt worked with, uh, our superintendent for a long time getting that done. Uh, as she is leaving the state for better things. She is very proud of that accomplishment that would typically take a lifetime and a career to get done working for the state. Um, so it was, it starts to look nice and get, get completed. If anybody wanted to say something to her before she left, that would be something nice because I know she, she takes a, a lot of pride in what's being done right now. And a lot of those rocks in the concrete are set by hand and leveled by hand. So I mean, it's labor intensive down there for those contractors to set those rocks. And they have to do it as the concrete's poured before it sets, so I mean, it's very labor intensive and it's, uh. Going to last a long time and look nice. To jump on the bathroom issue also, uh, skate park's looking really nice, we've been using it a lot this week. Uh, the girls have been scootering down there and riding their bikes. We went to use the bathroom there and my daughter informed me that she doesn't like to use bathroom there because somebody lives in it. These bathrooms are not being locked at night, they're left open twenty-four, seven, a lot of the times. She's been there in the evening with my mother and there was somebody in there with all their articles. Clothing and whatnot, looked like they were kind of living in that one. Um, I also noticed that across the street, that one appears to be open a lot too. Uh, there are, um, electricity that's available to people who walk up and just plug into it. So that also attracts people to stay there late at night or charge phones or, um, other issues. So, uh, if there was a way that we could have somebody maybe secure those at night, there are hours of operations for our parks. So I don't know if, uh, parks or public works or somebody might be able to. Adjust the shift or do something where they could check those and lock them up at night so we don't have issues with. People living in them and possibly, uh, attacking or molesting or doing something to our children that we don't know about when they go in there. Uh, most parents will go in and check anyways. But being that my daughter's eleven, I usually let her go in on her own. And when she informed me of that, I was kind of concerned with that, so. Other than that, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Terry King, often they call me Tigger, that's what I've gone by for the few years. Henry, uh, I have, uh, not had an opportunity to thank the City of Needles when, uh, my wife and I went through the Will of Fire. And the fundraisers and things that went on, I just wanted to thank you all for, for that, that was a blessing for sure in a time of need. Uh, I have in the past. Coordinated the National Day of Prayer in the park up here at the, uh, baseball field for a number of years and then. We bought property in, in Arizona and so we've been kind of out of the loop anyway. I've, uh. Rented or got the, uh, Santa Fe Park for the twenty ninth of April. And I'll, I'll leave each of you with a kind of an agenda, it's just a throw together a little pamphlet and I don't think I have seven, I think I have six if. Okay. Anyway, it's going to be a prayer day, I would ask the mayor if she would do a proclamation, at least in writing, and then have somebody from the board or herself, uh, represent. At one o'clock on that day. And that will kind of kick off the event, it's the twenty ninth, April twenty ninth. And we're just going to have, it'll be, uh, the Bible will be read out loud on a speaker and we'll, it'll be real casual, we'll have, uh. A certain booth set up and, and, and just what I've written down on there will give you an idea, just kind of an outline of what we are going to have, but it'll be similar to the National Day of Prayer, but it's going to be called the Needles Day of Prayer. And it'll be the first because it'll, uh. It'll be just before the actual National Day of Prayer. And I think a Saturday gives us the opportunity to have a whole day. And that's really, I just wanted to fill you in on that.
Thank you.
A little support there from Mr. Longbreak and it's good to see you familiar faces, I, I'd, like I say, I've been out of the loop for a while. Trying to get going again here, all right. Blessings, thank you very much.
For tonight's presentations, um, we are going to extend a ten minute time limit for presentation. It's been established by municipal code, section two dash eighteen. The first one is a proclamation presented to the Fort Mojave Indian Tribe for the Avi. Ka'ami National Monument Designation, if you want it. And then you can say it right, Colleen.
You did good. He tried.
Want to come up here? Over. Go on.
Up there.
I'll, you'll go over there.
Okay.
By the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Needles, I commend President Joseph R. Biden Jr. For protecting and preserving the Avi.
Avi Quame.
Avi, okay, Quame National Monument, ensuring that the cultural, prehistoric, historic and scientific values. Of this area endure for the benefit of all Americans.
You want to announce where it's located because I, people don't know where it's at.
Avi Quame is our. Our place, um, it's north of Laughlin. The biggest mountain up there. Uh, it's our place, it's our, as our Mojave people have, have, have known, the story is that is our place of creation. Or our God created the people. And, uh, many indigenous tribes of the Southwest do claim homage to Avi Quame. Um, along with the Fort Mojave people who lived in this area. There's many tribes, like, again, like I said, play, pay homage to Avi Quame or as other people may know it as Spirit Mountain. But Spirit Mountain's the big mountain, the biggest mountain up there north, um, of Laughlin there. And before the state lines were here, before Nevada, before Arizona, before California. Our people were here time immemorial and they've left their markings up there now, you know, with the petroglyphs and, and the area that they, they lived in. And we lived all along the corridor because the Ahamacav, that's our traditional name because Fort Mojave was a name given just by the government. But, uh, Ahamacav is our original name and that means people who live along the river. And we've lived along the whole river from north all the way to south. But now our tribe is divided, some have, people live down south in Parker. And half of us live here in Fort Mojave, which are the original Mojaves and we'll, we'll continue to be here forever. And we're so happy to be part of this, part of this. The president had awarded the, the Avi Quame for, as a national monument, so now that we know the area will be protected forever, as he told us. It will be protected forever, so we were so grateful. And we're honored that, uh, Fort Mojave or the city council is giving this proclamation to us because we, we want to be good neighbors to Needles. And we know that we, we welcome your support because we know without, um, supportive, uh, along with Needles or with the area. Laughlin, uh, coalitions, different groups, environmentalists, they helped us in this fight. Um, this fight didn't just happen overnight, it was many years in coming and it was a dream of our elders, of our people on go to protect this area. Um, so we're glad that it happened.
Thank you.
And, and it was momentous occasion, last Tuesday, I was in Washington DC to meet with the president, our council. Along with Chairman Williams, Vice Chairman Lewis and council members Johnny Hammer, Selena Reyes, Michael Jackson and myself. Who attended, um, this meeting with the president and he did speak, um, Nash, uh, at the conference there and he, he talked about Avi Quame. So we were, we were honored that he, he finally made that decision and we're so happy.
Yeah, thank you.
To be friends with the City of Needles. And my name is Colleen Garcia and I'm a lifelong member of Needles, born and raised here, I still live in Needles, so. I'm so. This council. Hold on to your waist so you can get through. For those that don't know me, I know there's several people that know me here. Maybe you don't. I've been on the city, uh, my tribal council for twenty-five years.
Wow.
Nice.
Okay, next we have the Fort Mojave Telephone Incorporated broadband presentation by General Manager Michael Scully.
Good evening. Thank you, members of council, uh, mayor and guests tonight. Um, I'll try to go through my presentation as quickly as possible and then we can answer any questions for as long as you'd like. Uh, basically, uh, what I'd like to do is, this is the formal announcement that we are going to be, uh, building to, uh. Uh, fiber to the premise throughout, uh, the Needles area. This is due to, um, back in, uh, May of twenty twenty-two, we had applied for a loan grant with the US Department of Agriculture and Rural Utility Services. We'd identified this as an opportunity to improve the area that's so close to, uh, you know, our, um, company and our, uh, the, for, uh, for Mojave Tribe. Um, we were awarded a grant to put in about forty miles of fiber over about seven and a half square miles, uh. Providing, uh, service up to potential of up to twenty-one hundred, uh. Facilities here, businesses and homes. Um, we are building a network that's going to be a hundred percent new, everything from the central office all the way to the homes, everything will be a hundred percent new. The network is capable of doing up to ten gigabytes symmetrical service. So this is really future proofing, uh, for, for the future, long-term future of the area. This is a fifty percent loan, fifty percent grant, and it was officially awarded on July twenty-eighth. Now, they actually told us we couldn't announce it for a while because they were going to do some kind of big announcement and then finally we said, can we please tell people? You know, we're getting kind of antsy here, we were getting things going, so it took a little while, but, um. You know, I wish we could have said something sooner officially, but we finally got that permission, so. Uh, what we're providing is an always on, always connected, um, you know, type service, so it's all fully symmetrical, I've same speed up, same speed down. Truly unlimited data, so it's going to be, uh, you know. About as good as it gets, I mean, I'd love to have this at my daughter's house in Mesa, Arizona, to be honest with you. We're not even close to what, what you'll have here. So next slide, please. So who we are, we're majority owned by the Fort Mojave Indian Tribe in a public-private partnership with a company called Dobson Telephone out of Oklahoma, company was formed in nineteen ninety. For those you don't know, you know, part of what we're here for is, you know, to building a stronger community, you know, we're all kind of integrated here, we're all so close and. This is really a nice opportunity, I think, to bring the area together, both, you know, for business and every other aspect of, of everyday life, so. It's an exciting project for us and hopefully the community. Uh, next slide, please. So we're going to be providing voice, data and video services, so when I say video, I'm putting an asterisk there because I want to be real clear. What we're going to have is a, an app-based service, so it's going to be like YouTube or. Or any of the services you can get today, let's say in a Roku stick or Apple device, well, this will be the same exact type of thing, except we'll offer it. As part of our bundled services, so it's not cable TV, it's a, it's a pure app-based driven service that will be available. We're in the process of turning it up today, uh, so. Um, we, we currently serve areas on the Fort Mojave Indian Reservation plus Topoc Golden Shores, Mojave Valley and, uh, some thick wireless and, and Needles. Uh, next slide, please. So our office is located about nine minutes from here, we're up, uh, the ninety-five. Uh, some of you are probably aware of where, uh, hunters used to be, those have been in the area for a while. Uh, we have a business office that's open eight to five, Monday through Friday. But, and the thing we're kind of stressing is we, we do have seven, seven by twenty-four hour service. Uh, we do have people on call around the clock, we do have tech support after business hours, so. Our big focus is going to be service, 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 service. You're going to be able to speak to somebody seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. And you're probably going to be able to understand them. I'll believe that, you interpret that anyway. Next slide, please. So our website is, uh, ftmojave.com, it's a secure site, you can pay bills on there. It's changing almost every day as we add features to it. Uh, there's online applications that can be filled out, you can do inquiries. For those who aren't familiar, we have the ACP program, which is a subsidized program for subsidized internet. Very automated, but we're going to have the automated factor and we're going to have the real factor, you can always get to a live person. I don't know about you, but it's always pretty frustrating when you can't talk to somebody when you really need to talk to somebody, we're going to continue doing that, very important to us. Uh, you can pay your bills online, it's very, uh, uh, mobile phone friendly as well, so it's not just on a, it's a computer, but it'll work on your cell phone. Next slide, please. So what we're offering, uh, free installation to your home, free extension into your home, uh, free use of managed router. Uh, no contracts, truly unlimited data, our plans start at one hundred by one hundred meg speeds up to a gigabit by gigabit. And like I said, the network is designed to go up to ten gigabits. We'll be offering incremental increases as our network evolves. Uh, but we're building it for the long term, this is something that's going to be here for, for many, many years. And then the TV streaming app that I mentioned earlier, next slide, please. So, part of our value is going to be a worry-free experience, so we're offering, uh, additional features that will make. This a really nice product for people, so things that will come free with this service are what's called, one of them's called Command IQ. Allows you to manage your wifi network, change your passwords, set access times, you know, for parental controls and that comes, it's, it's, there's an app you download on your phone. There'll be, there'll be little videos on our website shortly that'll help you use it. And that comes free with, with all of our services, next one, please. A little more information, it'll work on Android, Apple, uh, Apple, both. We've got a number of different, uh, routers in service, but for this market, uh, it'll be all the latest, greatest, uh. They're called Gigaspires and that's a device that can go up to ten gigabytes, so. Uh, that's, you know, for those who don't know, that's, that's about as fast as there is right now for the. That's, you know, for those who don't know, that's, that's about as fast as there is right now for the residential market. Okay, so you, and with this, too, you can set up guest networks. If you want to do something temporarily, you can run test, speed tests on there also, which is kind of cool. So you can kind of see how your network is performing. Next slide, please. Protect IQ, this is one that is really cool, I think, and it's really something that's going to come free with your service as well. This gives you protection against, from hackers, malware, viruses, and that comes standard with the devices we're putting out there, so. It's, it's going to be, you know, it comes basic with the package, and I think it's just part of that value we're trying to build. So the value just, we're looking for value, value, value that makes this product as strong as there's going to be anywhere. Next slide, please. So yeah, this, this, there's a little bit of details in here, but this allows you to do things like, there's more deeper features, I apologize. And there's another part of it called Experience IQ. Again, these are all, these are all enhancements, and, and it'll be, like I said, a lot of detail. If you want to take a little bit of time to look at it, it'll be on our website. So it'll say to be safe next week. So we were going through it today. We'll have it on there. You'll be able to run little videos. It'll kind of show you exactly how it works and the enhanced features. But rather than trying to go through the fine print today, I just want to, you know, these are all enhancements that are going to be part of the basic package for using this product. So next, next slide, please. So here's what we're not. No contracts, no hassles, no surprises. Simple as we can get. And, you know, we think that's, that's important for people. They have that choice. We are, just, just a little bit of an update. We've been in the process of getting the environmentals. We've gotten those approves. We, we've gotten BLM has permits have been issued, so I know we're working closely with, with the city. And I know there's a couple of steps that have to be concluded there so that we can officially go to, to contract and begin construction, so. It's going to be, we're going as fast as we can go, and, you know, we've got to put on the gas, and hopefully this is a great thing for Needles, and hope you're all. I know we're happy to be coming to town, so hopefully you feel the same way about us coming to town.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next we have the Chamber of Commerce update on the visitor's center.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Chamber, or Council. We are just setting up our quarterly report here, so that this will be, some will do like we've, like our agreements quarterly. As of us getting into the, the new office at we've had in the, for visitors, we've had 153 visitors in February and up to now 97 here in March. Our visitors have been coming in from 11 different states, plus Nevada and Arizona. Not just here in Fort Mojave or those, but we're seeing them coming in from Phoenix and Preston and locations of that. We've also had international visitors from Canada, England and Australia that have come in. They're visiting the city and wanting to take a look around, so it's kind of very exciting. We've had 232 emails that we've responded to in February and 246 so far here in March. We've been receiving calls, approximately 57 in February, and we're now up to 77 here in March. A lot are coming from local businesses, general public, as well as we've had confirmation, calls with the government offices like the State Assemblyman's District 13, the state, our state senator's office, as well as the county supervisor's office. So we're actually making some good communications going through there. We are very proud to host the golf tournament, which turned out quite successfully. We had 45 players that had come out. Unfortunately, it was later in the season, so we didn't get as big of a turnout as we would have actually hoped to. But we plan on making that change for next year, and we're going to keep going with that. So far, we've hosted two breakfasts this year. We will start hosting every fourth Thursday of the month. We'll be hosting a breakfast, and we'll vary it from locations here in Needles to be able to allow all the businesses in Needles to be able to have the opportunity to show off their food, as well as allow them to get some business from us and from the city. And like I said, that'll be the fourth Thursday of every month, and y'all are very welcome. I think I've sent out a few emails, but I don't have everybody's. But if I can get more emails, I will send more information out to y'all. We, we're starting to see drawing several businesses back into the chamber who kind of had stepped away from it. I guess I should say, you know, I don't think I even did this, so please forgive me. My name's Wayne Colburn. I am, so sorry. I'm the new administrator for the chamber, and I'll be working at the chamber office Tuesday through Saturday. Sorry about that, forgive me. But anyway, we've been able to speak with many of the businesses here in town, and we're continuing to reach out to more of the businesses, trying to draw back some that kind of stepped away due to COVID or just misunderstandings, whatever might have been, that we're trying to draw some of those people back in to continue to unite Needles, to make a strong chamber, makes for a strong city. We were, we're real excited. We've been doing conversations with both EDD as well as the workforce development here in San Bernardino County. We're trying to see about getting EDD to be able to spend one or two days a week or once every other week or so, to be able to bring them into the chamber office where they can actually work with our local community for employment type, whether it be education, trainings, and also helping people find jobs and, and find those right matches for them, as well as being able to have the workforce being able to come in and helping us to better understand best practices for our industries and companies that are here in the, in the city. We were excited to be able to participate with the Resource Fair. That did bring a little extra traffic in on, on that one day. But, you know, it's been one of those things that was really pleasant and getting a chance to meet a lot of the San Bernardino County people to make those extra connections. We're still going strong on the run for the wall. We're starting to see a lot of donations coming in, which we're really excited about. And last but not least, and I'll leave you all alone. We are looking at, within the next 30 days, to have our actual website up and running again. Where we'll be able to host a lot of our businesses, be able to advertise any specials or programs that are going on for them, events that are coming up. So if there's something coming up from the city, we'll be able to announce those things and blast those emails out and see if we can help draw in more people. As well as being able to have some of these services like EDD as well, and workforce development, have sections within the, the website that people can focus in on as well. And somebody is trying to make sure he says hi to. This is my service dog, Padfoot, and he actually was adopted by the chamber. He was voted in as our chamber mascot.
Yes.
Oh, the spaniel.
Hi, babe.
And he is my service dog, but he is everybody else's emotional support. So when you come into the chamber and say, he will come in and he'll step out of the office and say hi back to you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah. So do you, is there somebody in the office there that has a calendar that just keeps maintaining it? And if so, how far out do you go?
In calendar.
Of events that you or other organizations, okay, that, that will be.
But issue. They're having more events.
Okay.
As we continue to progress, that will be me, and again, that will also be something that will be on the, the website once we get it up and running. But yeah, I will be the event coordinator and then everything else.
Will, will other organizations be able to contact you and say, hey, can you put this on your calendar for us?
If somebody else has something coming up, that's again, something that we want to be able to do. For example, the Eduardo Garcia, the Assemblyman had an open house here this last week, and I was able to drive out there to it and be able to represent the chamber and got to hang out for a couple of minutes with Rick and Patrick, who went out there as well. And so those are type things, and I, I know there's at least a few more things that are coming up that I will start doing some blast emails on to let people know. There's the Easter egg hunt that's coming up through the Pride State Medical. And there's a couple others, but I'm going to start getting those things out and find a way to get everybody's emails, and I can, you know, letting you all know in advance as well. If they're not something that you're directly involved with, at least we can get you informed of it and if it's something that you, you'd like to come visit and hang out with us.
Well, and the other thing too is, sometimes we, we're, we're involved in the women's club. And so we, we've got events that we're planning our calendar for 23 and 24. And so we always have great things, but darn it, you've got something better going on. So, you know, we'd like to maybe find an empty, yeah.
Two agencies to make sure that we're not overlapping. Yeah, that would be me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we'll adjourn the joint council and PUA meeting. Adjourn the joint council MPUA meeting and convene NPUA and Sarda meeting. On number four, resolution number 03-28203 Sarda, declaring pursuant to California Government Code 54221, that the real property identified is APN 0186-222-10-000, approximately 1.34 acres, located near the intersection of I-40 and US-95. Is designated as exempt surplus land and not necessary for the successor agency's use at this time. Finding that such declaration is exempt from environmental review under the California Environment Quality Act and taking related actions. Staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This, the successor agency, the redevelopment authority, owned a piece of property that is outlined in red on the behind you, to your side, its greens. Within that ownership is a 1.34 acre parcel, which was part of the required when we built the wastewater treatment plant in 2004. Now, we do not use this area for filtration ponds because we're only processing about 350,000 gallons a day, not 1.2. And eventually, this might be needed for that, but it's not needed right now. So the successor agency took over the property, or the successor agency took over the property from the city. And there's three actions we're requesting of you tonight. One is to declare it as surplus property. The second is to offer it to the Needles Public Utility Authority. Because whether it's a new substation, or whether it's a new, whether it's part of a long-term filtration pond, it is not a city function. That's a utility board function. And the third thing is, taking your city hat off and putting your MPUA hat on is to accept the offer. So simply, it's a land swap at no cost to either party. But our recommendation is to approve this, and now hearing the very end of the redevelopment. Glad to answer the questions.
Counsel? Any questions? Okay. It's open to public comment. Do we have any comment about this? If not, public comment is closed. Let's see.
Can I move to approve 4A? So I was doing each one separate? With a separate vote?
You could probably.
We could. Combine them.
One area you're acting as Sarda.
Yeah, and it's.
I'll second it.
You can include A and B in one motion.
So I'll move to approve 4A and 4B.
I will second that, too.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Jernigan?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Do we switch hats? Okay, now we're going to be in P.
I'll second it. Resolution number 0328-203, NPUA authorizing the acceptance of the transfer of the real property identified as APN 0186-222-10-000, approximately 1.34 acres, located near the intersection of I-40 and US-95. To the Needles Public Utility Authority from the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of Needles for essential authority power, substation government purposes, and approving certain related actions. Staff report.
The same, it's same piece property, but just as a point of order, the mayor votes on NP wait a minute.
Thank you. Counsel, questions?
I'll move to approve, oh, sorry.
Okay. Public hearing, anybody wishing to speak about this matter? If not, public hearing is closed. Call for motion.
I'll move to approve five.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Jernigan?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Adjourn the joint MPUA and Sarda meeting and reconvene the council meeting. Public hearing. Public hearing notice to consider amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Needles Municipal Code, adding Article 5 Housing Commission. Staff report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As we've talked all the way along over the last two months, there is, the need was established a housing commission. And on that housing commission needs to be two members, one of which is a a client or customer of the housing authority properties. The other is, there's an age requirement, I believe it's 62. About that. And then the, the other appointments are at your discretion. The first question that, that arises is the number of people on this commission. Traditionally, and on the other commissions, there are seven members. But when you take a look at the planning commission, the parks recreation commission, the utility board, cemetery advisors board, city council, each of those requiring seven. We have a hard time getting sufficient numbers to fill those seats. And at least two of our commissions have vacancies on those now. So my recommendation is we consider five, a five-member housing commission. And then, so after you hold your hearing on that issue, and how it will be created and, and operate, it'll operate much like your planning commission. They are the, the body that hears a matter first and then recommends your consideration. Same thing with utility and the like. So it will function in much the same manner. So what we're recommending is to create this. Tonight is a public hearing, so after public comment, if there are any changes you would like to make to the ordinance that's in front, let us know. We'll incorporate those changes with bringing this back to the next meeting for a second reading. or a second reading, if the council agrees, then it will be considered adopted. But ordinances aren't effective for thirty days afterwards. So during that thirty-day period, we will advertise for appointments to these five positions if you prefer. And then at the end of that thirty-day period, you should be in a position of making those appointments. As to the substance, I want to inform the council that we need a housing authority that is proactive. The problems we're dealing with and reacting on inaction. There is monies which you can't even imagine are available for senior housing, for veterans housing, for first-time home buyers or neighborhood renewal type assistance to low and moderate income families to rehabilitate their existing homes. So this, let's, let's do this thing. So I've gone too far.
Thank you.
Thank you for forgiveness and glad to answer any questions here.
Questions by council?
I, I just have one. Have you been in contact with the higher ups with the housing authorities hood? Are they like, are they liking us a little bit?
Absolutely. I can tell you that, that we have a weekly phone call with Mr. Rhodes, who is the Deputy Administrator of the LA Field Office of HUD. And we submitted our recovery plan, which is on your consent agenda. They were very happy with it. It was essentially the report I gave to you last meeting. They're very happy with it. They're very happy with the progress that's been made. We've received the draft audit of twenty twenty-one. So we're now redoing that. We're ready to turn in the unaudited financial statements for twenty-one, twenty-two. And as soon as those are reviewed, they'll be accepted, they'll be moved to the audit stage. So we are progressing. Can't get there fast enough. And, and we may get a designation of still a troubled agency at the end of this month, but it's not been a lack of effort and it hasn't been because we, we've attacked this thing with everything we've got, all the bigger.
I think we made it. It sounds like we've made some tremendous progress in a short amount of time trying to get this caught up. So I think that's.
Not only Julie, but Barbara Galeo and Finance Department, Patrick and I. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing, is there anyone wish to come forward to speak about this? If not, public hearing is closed. Wait.
I'm sorry, did we open it? I must have missed.
Yes. I did. I closed it. Nobody was coming forward. Okay.
I will move to approve the ordinance six six zero D F C amending the chapter two administration of the Needles Municipal Code to add article nine Housing Commission.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell? Yes. McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
Consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council, a member scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Approve items seven through thirteen on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
Move to approve.
Second.
Make a comment. There are no minutes included in here. I emailed them to you. Did you not receive them? I'll print out a copy. Okay, no, I'll, I'll go look, go back and look.
Are we able to pull one just for more clarification?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to pull twelve.
Any others pulled? Okay.
Yes, I'll move to approve seven through thirteen minus twelve.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
And staff report for twelve?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, over the last since twenty fourteen, we've used DMG consultants as our economic development consultant. Michael Bracken is the principal. He's a regionally recognized economist. Many of you have attended ICSC conferences with Michael. He's truly an expert on retail wealth. Michael has, is facing situations with his family and is reducing the scope, the geographic scope of his business to just a few points close to his home base in Palm dead. As such, we, we will be looking at establishing a new program for economic development, marketing and city promotions. So in the first instance, we need a budget amendment to pay his contract through the end of the ICSC conference in May and then wrap up his work. And then new budget for next fiscal year, we're going to be proposing to include a position and or firm that can be the marketing director for the city. It, and, and market and promote tourism, manufacturing, housing and retail. So we've got now like a well-developed and city council adopted marketing plan. But we need the expertise and, and although I dearly love Patrick and, and he does, has done a wonderful job in, in fulfilling that within concert with Michael. Boost this effort.
I'm gonna ask a question.
So I need you, I would request that you approved the fifteen thousand of existing appropriations to cover Michael's.
Rick, didn't, wasn't he already in the budget with the fees? Why is there a change?
Well, he was at a very much reduced scope because he started winding down his business. His wife's health problems have been coming on for a couple.
Correct, but wasn't he already in the budget for the whole year?
No, well, he was, but at, at about a couple thousand a month and really what we needed for these last three months is about five thousand. So we just.
Call for the motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
End of consent. Regular items, public comments pertaining to the council items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. Authorize those interested in attending the inland Empire Tourism Regional Summit on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, eight thirty AM to one PM in the event center at Bear Springs Hotel. Staff report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the inland empire tourism summit is occurring in Thailand over by Riverside. Miles. Beginning at eight thirty and the cost is twenty-five dollars per registered registrant and then there's hotel costs and mileage by both counselor Campbell and Mayor Jernigan expressing this.
And I will not need a hotel. I have that covered.
I'll move to approve to send Mayor Jernigan and Councilmember Campbell.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
City attorneys report.
We have sound.
So I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was good.
City manager.
Thank you, John. You put it all on me. Are in court on Thursday for an appointment with for a point receiver to take over the River Valley Inn and make a determination of demolition or rehabilitation. That person, that party will be appointed by the court and be working under the direction of the court and in it's, it's a way to get this public business under control and a solution. So John's assistant city attorney Lena Wade and Bernie Hatz are code enforcement officers who handle this matter. Will be in court on Thursday. As I mentioned earlier, we met on the recovery plan. We received a lot of, of positive comments. Going to pass around also for you, because I think you need the man understand what I'm saying. Twenty nineteen, the state of California decided to regulate manganese and iron. And no other state, the best we can find regulates it. Either one of them are cancer causing or serious, you can get these vitamin supplements in, in food. But what they did was they, of our three wells, number fifteen, which is on Bush Street by the bridge over in Arizona. And well, eleven and well twelve. Fifteen, they determined that there weren't elevated levels of iron or manganese. So we've used that well continuously, but it's been our sole well, which is incredibly volatile. So we are now starting to experience a loss of suction in that well. And what that usually means is it's worn out the edges of the shaft that draws that water up. And as a result, we're getting gravel in the well. Or in, in the water. So what we have done is we have been, we have taken well number eleven, which is on the south side of the Gulf Force. And we flushed that well over a long period of time. And we're now, so therefore the, the water quality control board removed it as a inoperable weapon and put it back. So we are going to shift tomorrow to well eleven while we repair well fifteen. Now, the long-term solution is an eight million dollar water treatment plant, which the state has agreed upon one hundred percent to effectively filter out and remove iron and manganese from all three of the wells, eleven, fifteen and twelve, which is on the Gulf.
Okay.
We are in the ninety percent range on design. We did it design build, so we don't need to go out to bid for a contractor. We selected a engineering contractor firm all combined when we did this to expedite it. And we should be able to start, we could have started demolition of the existing facilities down there. But Rainey does not want any movement of dirt around that well while it's our only well.
Yeah.
So that's probably going to push it back about sixty minutes. So for the next thirty to sixty days, we'll be using well eleven. It has sufficient water. It does not contain elevated levels of, of iron or manganese. It's all within the rules, regulations of the state of California. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that we're making that shift tomorrow. We've anticipated fail-safe, fail-safe every scenario that we could come up with. Want to mention that Patrick and Mayor and I met with the run for wall organizers. Everything's coming together. The Easter egg hunt was mentioned a little bit earlier. I want to make one comment on the restrooms. You heard tonight, the difficulty to deal with fresh public listeners is that if you have them open all the time, you get folks that want to live in. If you close it, doesn't mean the people aren't going to go.
Use the street.
They, they will use the land around the residence. I would say, darn if you do. I'm very concerned about security of kids, young girls. So we are going to look at how we can lock those at ten o'clock, which is when, when the parks close. I may be talking to the sheriffs about some help on this, but for public work to come out, it's a minimum two hours of overtime which requires so, whether I have to be out there with the key myself, we need to come up with a policy.
Councilmember Campbell?
I just, I wanted to address the, the bathrooms at the skate park. I, I'm not going to say that didn't happen. That happens all the time, but I am at the dog park probably five days a week, sometimes six with my dog in the evening, late at night, and I, I'm in those bathrooms. Not only am I in them, using them, I'm always in them checking them. Because I'm still not happy that we don't have men's and women's signs on the doors that we need to have them designated. It's important that, that little girls go into a bathroom that says girls and no man can say he belongs in there because it's a little girls, it's a girls bathroom. And the same goes for boys. You know, they, we should just have it. You can use whatever you want, but we have to have it designated. So I have never found anyone in the bathroom. And this has been since before we got the lights fixed. I've been there like five nights a week. So I haven't, you know, I haven't seen that happen, but I'm sure it is happening because people are going to go in, sleep, bathe or whatever. So I just want to say that if, I think it was a situational thing that day and that it's not a chronic thing yet. Could change when summer comes and people want shelter and, and you know, things can change. So if it makes you just feel any better, I have been in them and that's not been the case. Thanks. That's all I have.
Councilmember McCorkle?
I just have a, a question for the bathrooms, what you just, what you just brought up. I could see where this could be become a security issue a little bit. I, I get the overtime aspect of it and that you said you were going to talk to the sheriff's department. I didn't know if it was part of the sheriff's department, but isn't there a, not a citizen patrol? Well, I guess that's what it's called. Do we still have that in Needles with the sheriff's department that I don't know how many hours a day they work or if they're able to go around and lock the bathrooms up and check the park while they're doing security process? To clear out them kids? Love them, but clear them. They need to go home and go to bed at two.
Candace will do it.
Councilmember Merritt? Councilmember Hoag?
Just two items. First of all, I want to thank you for replacing the flag at the wagon. Got a brand new flag up there. Appreciate it. Secondly, a year ago, there was a grant to fix up first and second beach park. It was a two point two million dollar grant. Is that, is that Jack Smith or is that, no, is that?
The Clean California Grant was from Caltrans for two point two million dollars to make improvements at the park. That work is in engineering right now.
Okay.
We are looking at how the bathroom is going to work in relationship to other nearby properties. And what we're trying to do is get all the engineering done on Duke Watkins, Jack Smith and first and second beach, which are also going to be Bob Bell beaches. And put that out as a eight million dollar contract. We think we'll be able to get a better price on a larger project to do those three things. So we're in engineering now and we would love to go to construction on those by September.
Okay, yeah, because somebody had posted, made a posting on Facebook, well, not seeing anything being done. We have a timeframe on this. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bell?
Couple of things. Getting up of our parks, I think we, we have a lot of parks already open and we're going to be.
we, we have a lot of parks already open and we're going to add a quite a, a few more, just trying to keep on top of it. We've been, I mean, the weather's been beautiful, so we've really been out at all of them. Um, but I know we're going to do some work on Jack Smith. That's just going to come with the others. But we just have to stay on top of them. I mean, I know like Clint picked up about at least a good bag of trash at the skate park. We've been there. Oh, my God, I can't believe those, that park's amazing. The paint job, our kids are loving. So we've been there e- every day for the last few weeks, spring break here, and they're there every day. So we picked up a couple of bags of trash every time. So it's just something that we have to stay on top of. We're going to add more parks. I know our staff's got to keep. I mean, we're going to just give them more work and I'm not asking them to put more work on them, but it's, I mean, even, I mean, I picked up a bag of trash there. So if there's some way we could start doing, going back to like taking a selfie of yourself and saying like community cleanup and submit it. If, I would love to have a online presence again with our social media. We've got to get there to have the city of needles. If you post your picture and then we could put you in a group to win, I don't know, a golf game or something of this for the month if we get, you know, because I mean, many of us go out or walking, especially this time of year. If you take a bag and just pick up a bag of trash and we can all help out our city and snap this selfie, put it on Instagram, on the city of needles, something when we get our social media presence. At this point, maybe our website, since we don't really have much. And then we could enter them in for whatever fun drawing. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have to be something major, but just the fact that we're recognizing our citizens, can we keep the community spirit of cleaning up that while you're out, just take a picker and a bag with you to pick up while you're out and about just to keep it going. We had that community cleanup on Saturday. Last Saturday, I want to thank the city staff. I set free was there. I Caltrans took the trash. Um, bit a lot of people out cleaning up. And actually, the cleanup this year was much less trash than it was even two years ago. So I mean, if we keep this up, we can continually see the benefits of the cleanup and we're all helping out pitching in a little bit. We're on that note, we're going to do Thursday cleanup at the rodeo grounds for our rodeo this weekend, Thursday at eight to nine or whatever it be. Uh, to try to keep, to keep this going while we have, especially the rodeo coming in, that brings in lots of people. And I mean, I appreciate the rodeo committee. We could at least help them out a little bit, pick up the area around there. It looks like we could try, if the students at the high school can get um credits, they have to do an hour, twenty hours a year of community service. So um Kelly McKee said that we could just keep a list. They could come and we could give them that list if anybody's kids want to come get a little community service in on that day also. Um, so that's one, one, one part of it all. Um, we talked with that. Um, can we add on to our list too? I know we talked about a little Dale with you, but if we can put your report on also so we can get a report from the city manager, city, city attorney and the city clerk, so we can get a three man report, get that officially added in, just so that we all keep up with all of us reporting.
Yeah, Dale's got a six hour lecture right there for us.
And then um where we, where are we on the pool? I know we kind of talked that that's going to be up and running before pool season starts. But that's another one that we have to just park that is more work, I know.
And a mayor, council belt, the pool, the bottom of the pool and the sides of the pool, the plaster was seriously deteriorating because it's never been replastered since it was plastered in the beginning. So um we are doing repairs to that to get us through the summer. Uh, we will be in open, I forget the date that I got from Jennifer.
There's something in April, end of April.
And we want to get through the, the season and then in next year's budget, we're going to include uh when we drain it at the end of September, that we will replaster the wall and be ready. I know, I hear about this every night.
We, we love our pool in the summer. I mean, there's how many, how many ladies out there and kids on swim team? That's a big deal. I keep seeing it empty. I'm like, oh, we're getting hotter. We're getting hotter. Ah, man, that's it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks. Uh, councilmember, long break.
Yeah, just to add to that poll, is there any way we could get a logo of the city of needles at the bottom of the pole and we get it repainted? If so, that'd be kind of neat.
Yes, um, and for yes, um, I will build that into the cost when we re-plaster it.
Awesome. Okay, now, um, there's a street light out on Luna Vista in front of twenty twenty-one. Also, the train park, uh, the flag and the light, the flag uh is in pretty bad shape and there's no light on that either. And also, um, I forgot to mention this last meeting, but uh I helped a gentleman up in front of River City Pizza that wa, he was walking by there with his walker and he fell because, because the curb right there a- and the driveway to come in is so steep that he fell there and I had to pull over and help him, help him call, uh, well, he, he didn't want paramedics, but he was, he was hurt. I took him inside and uh tried to get him all the help he needed. And uh, but it was really steep and there's no way to walk by there with a walker without falling down. I almost fell down myself picking him up and bringing him into River, River City Pizza. So that curb's pretty bad right there. And uh also on uh Broadway in between J and K Street, there's those two garages that are there and those, those doors on those garages are getting pretty bad shape. There's holes in them. Um, I'm sure they're privately owned, but they're, they face right on the street.
J and L.
Yeah, we have a code enforcement action on that.
Oh, awesome. Okay. And that's all I got.
After that, I want to thank the mayor for the party she threw on Saturday with the donuts. It was great. It was really wonderful.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank all those that came out for the um cleanup at Jack Smith Park. It was really good and pretty much just an hour and a half, we really had that part cleaned up. Velvet. So thank you again. And I would want to elaborate too on the bathroom issue at the El Garcis and the park. We went through all of this for a number of years trying to maintain the dignity of that building. We also have people living in there. I mean, I could talk the next hour what has gone on in that building with those bathrooms. Um, they do need to be locked. We do have rentals, especially during the day. We have B N S F in there pretty much through the week. And then on the weekends, we have the rentals. So, and that is part of the rental that they have bathroom access, that the bathrooms are maintained, they're clean, and we did lose a number of rentals, like the school quit coming down there for their events because they had to fight the homeless, the bathroom issues. So um, we are kind of just maintaining that, that it's, you know, for the rental use and, you know, people that take tours go in and use the bathroom and that. So I, I mean, it's, all the doors are open. We've had doors pushed back so hard. They went through the frame of the wall. I mean, we've had an extreme amount of damage inside that building. And we're trying to preserve it. We're getting ready to put eighty bricks down in the back by the fountain. So the maintenance of that building is really ongoing. So I appreciate all those that continue renting. We had over forty-six hundred people come through that building last year. I mean, so we are getting visitors into that building, but that amount and then just trying to, and then the, the parks, you know, I don't want to keep Jesse and all of his crew down there every day twenty-four seven. It's, that's what it would take if you opened those bathrooms like that again. So thank you and have a good evening.